Great, good evening. Our meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2024 is now called to order. If all would please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
J.C., can you take a roll call for us?
President Galbraith.
Present.
Vice President Morgan. Secretary Tyler.
Present.
Board Member Tripp.
Present.
Board Member Miller.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, J.C. All right, we'd like to welcome everyone in tonight. And we'd like to excuse Jeffrey Morgan, he's traveling for work tonight. And then, of course, you heard Jessica Tyler, she's on, I want it like heavenly speakers, I don't know. She's coming in through virtually tonight, but we're grateful that she's here with us. And it's wonderful to have all of you here, we have two great teams here with us tonight that we'll be hearing from in just a few minutes. And so to get us started, we'll start with some introductory comments by Dr. V. Sue Cleveland, our Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, and good, thank you all so much for being here this evening. We did not have any board committee or workshop sessions held today before the meetings, so we're starting right on time and don't have any additional information to bring from either of those. With that, this morning, we've been doing school visits, Jana, Chanelle, and Renee Sosedo and I, and we have been visiting district schools. And it's always a really good opportunity to talk with people, learn what's going on in their school sites, what their needs are, things that they would like us to consider for the future. They find them very useful. This morning, Jana and I were at Vista Grande Elementary School and had a wonderful visit there, a lot of good feedback from the staff. And but when we were there, we learned that Vista Grande had been selected to create ornaments that symbolize the history and the heritage and culture of New Mexico for display in Washington, DC. And if I might kind of imagine it, and you know, anybody can fill me in and change that information, but my understanding is there's the national tree, the big tree that is in Washington, DC. And then there are smaller trees close to it for every state. And so, and those are decorated. And so we had, the state of New Mexico had one. And so Principal Christine Prescott and art teacher Liz Lockhart are going to share some information and introduce Maximo Riso to the board. This talented student was selected by the National Park Service to represent the Vista Grande students who have ornaments on the New Mexico tree. And they're here right now, and they're part of my presentation because we didn't know to put it on the agenda. So if you find without, Madam President, we're going to have them come forward and share a little more information. And then we're going to show you his ornament, and we're going to show you some of the others that students did it from across the country. Ours, of course, was the best, absolutely, without any doubt. But the others were great as well. So Principal Prescott, I'll turn it over to you, and we have some others here, and certainly our teachers here.
Oh, she's not here tonight.
Oh, she didn't make it, huh? Okay, okay.
Sorry. Good evening, hi guys, I'm so sorry, we're a little late. We, Maximo had his first TV interview a few minutes ago across the hall, and he did wonderful. We are just so grateful and thrilled that our school was chosen to represent the state of New Mexico. We were emailed over the summer, honestly, and so it's been, kind of forgot about it a little bit. And then the, then we started getting the ball rolling, and our art teacher, who's phenomenal, held five sessions for students. She had chosen some exemplary students in art, and they created 24 different ornaments. And they are hanging on the New Mexico State Tree on the south lawn of the White House. So we are very excited. Maximos was chosen to be on the website to represent the state. So if you pull up the website for the National Park Service and the Christmas, and the National Christmas Tree, and under the state ornaments, New Mexico, it shows Maximos. So yeah, we're really excited.
You don't have to say things, but if you'd like to share something about your ornament or how you got an idea to do this particular one, we would love to hear it, but it's strictly up to you.
About the drawing itself, it took me like four shades of brown alone, alone, just to get the dirt done, like six shades of green to get the, just the yucca plant done. And this is an amazing experience for, experience for me, just as like a 10-year-old child alone, and thinking if like preschool me saw how this would be him in the future. Amazing.
I love that, I love that.
Maximos is a great artist, he's also an amazing musician, and we have been, we get to see his creativity a lot, and we are very grateful for that. And I also want to add that our Fine Arts Department, our art teacher, we are so lucky and grateful to be able to have such wonderful opportunities for our students. So thank you so much, we're excited that Vista Grande is up there, we have friends that live there, and they took pictures of the tree, and it is really fun to see, so thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, this is just so cool, I mean, it really is, but thank you for coming, we really glad you were here.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. I'm going to start just saying New Mexico, it does take four shades of brown to make it, but I love this beautiful sky because it's not what it's all about here in New Mexico, so great job.
Yeah, and, oh, sorry, I'm so sorry, but K.R. Keewee just interviewed Maximos and his parents and, and myself, and we were able to talk about some of the things, so that's supposed to be aired tonight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he did great, it's his first interview, it was wonderful, he did wonderful. Good job, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Before we leave that, I thought you might just briefly like to see the other ornaments, and then you'll see why I thought ours was the best. But they are all very interesting, and so in the spirit of Christmas, I thought you might like to see what other children have done across the country.
I'll sing, I'm just kidding. Very beautiful. Ah, there's New Mexico. Wow, wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we go to our other commendations, and the first one, we were having a couple of minutes, this Rio Rancho High School Boys Cross Country Program. They were, of course, as you know, the winners of the 2024 State Champions, 2024 State Champions. Todd Rush, our Executive Director of Athletics, will provide some additional information on this outstanding accomplishment. He will also share a special accomplishment of one of the Rio Rancho High School team members, Charlie Voss. Congratulations to Coach Keller, all of the other coaches, players that support this program, and I'll turn it over now to Todd Rush.
Do you want to wait until we get to?
Oh, that's right, we have to wait, I got into the thing with the other, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait, my apologies. Okay, and then, of course, we have the commendations for Cleveland High School, the 2024 State Championship winners against the Craven High School. And it was a wonderfully exciting game, and so proud of just the incredible talent and the spirit and just giving everything that they had, and it was a wonderful game to watch. Todd Rush will also provide some information about the game, and of course, it was played at Wilson Stadium in Albuquerque. And congratulations to Coach Garza, all of the other coaches and players, and this wonderful photo that we have is courtesy of the Albuquerque Journal. And then we also have this evening, another really nice part of our agenda, and that's the Hall of Honor nominees. The nominees and a description of the process will be presented by Andrea Yabra, who is our Chair and Assistant Principal in Independence High School. She's been with our district a long time, and we really appreciate her stepping up in this leadership role. The Hall of Honor is very important to us, and it recognizes people who have done outstanding things for our school district over many years. We really want to thank everyone who took the time to submit a name for the committee's consideration. And you know, as it always is, there's lots of really good people to consider, and it's a really challenging task. However, you know, there's, there's other candidates, and many of them are also very worthy, and maybe were not selected this year, they do remain in the, in the pool. And so it, just because they didn't make it this year doesn't mean they won't, and they don't have to have their names resubmitted. The names nominated this year are Mark Leonard and Joan Bivens, and many of you knew both of them. Mark Leonard is one of the first individuals I met in the district when I visited at Lincoln, the very first visit. And they were having a Valentine's dance, and I'll just let it go with that. But I danced with Mark Leonard, and it was quite an interesting experience. And Joan had been an E.A. in our district, and then she went on to be an Administrative Assistant and served many, many years in our schools. And both of these are posthumous nominations, so very important that, that, that these names be brought to the board this, this evening. And again, encourage people to submit your nominations. And then, as you know, we have some new legislation that addresses college grad, high school graduation and preparing students for college in the workplace. And so we will, we had a long workshop on that, we televised that workshop, so people had an opportunity here and see all of the discussion. We were going to go back over the highlights of that this evening because the board now needs to approve and ratify those changes. And so we, we really were pleased with how, how the outcome was, we maintained higher standards in, in our district. But we really looked at it more in terms of being able to offer students as many electives as possible in their high school experience. And so they will be presenting an overview of that. You probably would be expecting Renee and Stephanie to do that, Stephanie is at a conference, some training, and Renee is here, but she doesn't have much of a voice. And so she's dealing with a little bit of laryngitis, so Jana Chanelle is going to pick that up, and then Amanda Bader is here as well to provide backup or help answer any additional questions as well. So thank you both for stepping in and doing that for us this evening. As I said, the, the board went over all the options in a workshop. None of these things, I really want to stress, is we've had a couple of folks reach out to us about it, does not impact any student in high school right now. Several years ago, we had a state statute passed that any changes in graduation requirements would start with the freshman class after that bill had been passed. So no student currently in high schools will be impacted by these changes. And the students that will be, and one of those ninth graders next year will be the first ones to have these new regulations applied. Some of the changes in House 171 included the, the ability for districts to make Algebra II optional, although still encouraged, and our colleges still say it's really good to have it if you are planning to go on to college, at least in several areas, because if not, you may end up in a remedial math program. So it's still encouraged by our colleges and universities, however, there's some other really good math options out there now. And the other thing that's required is all students will need to do a two semester career-related block. So let's say you were interested in CTE, you would take, you would have to take at least two classes in the same area. Or it could be in fine arts, you might be planning a career in music, it could be two semesters of music, but you have to have a two semester block in something related to your career goals and what you hope to do. There were also some changes related to a requirement for financial literacy, and you'll learn a little more about that this evening. The, the number of credits required for graduation did not change. And as I said, we have Jana and Amanda here to go over that presentation briefly, and the board will be asked to ratify the, the changes. And then we do have some policy revisions, we only have one item that is a second reading, and the board will be asked to take action on the proposed policies to, changes to Policy 209, Agenda is an Order of Business for Board Meetings. The Board of Education, as you well know, can only take action on the second ruling of any proposed policy changes. And these proposed changes to Policy 209 will be presented by Lauren Hatch, Chief Legal Counsel. And then we have some first readings, and the board cannot take any action on policy changes during the first reading of the proposed change. And all of the proposed changes in the first reading will be presented by Mike Chavez, our Executive Director of Human Resources. And they relate to the drug-free workplace for employees, termination and discharge of employees, medical leave for employees, and non-medical leave for employees. So those will be a first reading, some proposed changes are being made to this policy, the board will not take any action on those this evening. And then classes end on December 20th, staff will return on January the 6th, students will return on January the 7th, and we hope all of you will have a happy and safe holiday, and we'll see you. The next board meeting will be in the next year unless we have some emergency issues come up, so that's all I have, do you have any questions? Comments, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we'll now go to approve the prioritize agenda and proposed time allocations.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to, to approve the, the agenda and propose.
I'm tongue-tied. I'm with you, you're good.
Pro the prioritize agenda.
Second motion? Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for your own. All right, well now move into our commendations, now is the time. And so our first commendation is going to be for the Rio Rancho High School Boys Cross Country Program for winning the state championship. And so, like to invite Todd Rush, our Executive Director of Athletics, and any of those that he wants to invite up as he comes.
Good evening, Board President Galbraith, Superintendent Cleveland, members of the board. This evening, I would like to recognize the Rio Rancho High School Boys Cross Country Program and their head coach, Mr. Phil Keller, for winning the program's fifth state championship on November 9th. This championship marks the 51st state championship for Rio Rancho High School and the 100th for the Rio Rancho Public Schools. Coach Keller and his boys' program had a dominant year, which included achieving the nation's 12th ranking. And over the weekend, senior Charlie Voss won the individual national championship at the Nike Cross Nationals in Portland, Oregon with a 5K time of 1528. Charlie is also the state's first ever national cross-country champion. I am honored to introduce head coach Phil Keller and members of the 2020
New Mexico State Boys Cross Country Champion, Rio Rancho Rams.
All right, thank you, Todd, you took some of my words.
All right, thank you for having us, board members and Superintendent Cleveland, I really appreciate coming, and I'm kind of making this a tradition, this is our third year in a row of the boys winning state cross-country. And before I get going with these boys, I also want to mention our girls' team did play second and had two all-state runners as well, so I'm really proud of them too. They haven't finished lower than second in four years as a program, so we're really proud of them. These boys, though, won the third cross-country title in a row, and we have two boys, Mateo and Cody, who's not here, who were scoring runners, scoring runners meaning top five runners on our team. They were on all three of those teams, and I don't know many student athletes in the state that win three state titles in their high school career, but those two boys did that, and they were just, they've just been solid, consistent runners. Mateo, here, we call him a grumpy old man, but he, he just comes through for us every week, and we love having him. The other guy on the other side there, I think one of you know him pretty well, but that's Isaiah Galbraith, he's a junior on the team. He's one of our returning runners that will be coming back next year to help us try to win again. But another solid varsity runner for us has improved just light years from his freshman year when I started coaching him, and just love having him. Let me talk you through the season just a little bit, we don't just run like during the school year when school starts, like we start in June, and we had a summer camp this year in July in Red River where we had 30 athletes come, 30 boys and girls come, and we had four condos reserved, and we trained in Red River at high elevation, and this team, this embodies hard work. Like these championships don't happen because of what we do on one given week or one given month or whatever, they happen because of what we do over a long period of time. So they are successful because of that work they put in. And Mr. Rush alluded, we ranked 12th at our highest this year, we missed out on nationals, we were sixth at regionals, we needed to be fourth, and we missed out by 13 points, which is basically like, basically a couple of free throws in basketball.
It's three points, Coach, three points.
So we missed out just by a few points, but it was close, and, and they had a chance to make nationals, we just missed out. Charlie in the middle here, our best dressed runner, he qualified for nationals by placing third, and that was this weekend over in Portland. And I'm sure you guys, Todd mentioned it, but he went out there, and even though he wasn't even ranked in the top 20, ran really well, and ended up in the top five with a K to go, and made a move, and ended up winning that race, being New Mexico's first national champion in cross-country and, and for our state, and just incredible, incredible poise and, and running that he did. So congratulations, Charlie. And I'm just so proud of this team, I'm so proud of my athletes for being able to do what they do, to believing in me and believing in the program. And we don't just run too, I also want to point out that our varsity team has a team GPA of 3.7, so, which is pretty incredible. All of our kids will go on to post-high school, college, and a lot of them will end up running, I know, I was just talking, like, we'll probably have a signing ceremony about six or seven boys and girls that'll compete in college this year, and we're excited for that. But thanks for having us, and like I said, we're, we're moving into track season next, and we're looking to do big and better things there too, so.
Thank you, thank you, we're going to do one applause. Do you want, do you want to talk, no, so we have Principal Barker up here, I do want to say that he was at that state meet, and was just as excited as the rest of us as all of that took place. So, so we're grateful for his support for, for the cross-country program, so, boys. Okay, I saw Mateo come first, and then I thought, there's no way Mateo's going to say anything, but maybe if you want to, but I thought, now, once I saw Charlie, I thought, oh, we could get Charlie to, to talk for a moment, but.
Maybe talked out, he's been interviewed.
I know, I watched most of those, but Charlie, do you want to talk for just a second and maybe talk about maybe your national experience, or, I mean, I'm talking, you know, brief, but you know, would you, would you like to add something? Mateo, you're welcome to as well if you'd like to, but I would never force that upon, upon Mateo.
Coach Keller and Principal Barker for, I guess, supporting us these past few years, and I'm going to miss you guys.
Sound good, thanks, Mateo.
I, I second that, thank you very much. The program couldn't be what it is today without the support of the coaches and obviously the board and parents and everyone, and I'm just so grateful that I get to be a part of this team. And I've kind of missed the dress code, maybe I did a little too much, but I'm, I'm so, I'm so grateful to be on this team and all the experience I've had with them.
Thank you, and I won't bug Isaiah since he's a junior this year, maybe you will, we'll bug him, we'll bug him next, next year, next year, when we make state again. I just, you know, I want to add for, to all of you and give the board an opportunity, and Dr. Cleveland, if she'd like, but it's been such a good season, and these kids really, you guys are dedicated to what you do. And already, I know everyone's trying to, already just get ready for track and get excited for track, and it's a lot of dedication. I know when we go on vacations, my kids are like, we got to get our runs in, because they have coaches who really help them to, to understand how important it is to do those things. And so hard work pays off, and I think even for, for Charlie, I was thinking about Charlie's journey as he was coming to this point, and how coming up and really training, you know, at the elevation with us New Mexicans probably made a huge difference, honestly, even, even for you, being here in New Mexico, and so you have all that natural talent, and then there's that extra push, you know? And it was awesome to hear Charlie talked about how him and Mateo did a workout a few days before they went, Charlie went out to nationals, but that's what it's all about, and that for all of our teams and our sports teams is working with each other. And in cross-country, we kind of go against each other, right, and we're a team at the same time, but it's amazing the way that all of you guys, and we'll see Cleveland up here in a minute, but as you guys work as a team, that's what helps us to get better. And so congratulations with everything that you guys have accomplished, it is seriously impressive, and, and I'm grateful, and I'm just, I've been able to see it firsthand and all the, all the good that has come from, from that team, so thank you so much. Anyone else want to add anything?
I'm just so grateful to be on the board right now, three times in a row, holy cow, congratulations, true champions, just a good job, it's a great, great team.
Just add my congratulations to you and your parents and friends who helped you get here, and so appreciate your dedication and hard work, and you can see how that pays off, and my best to each of you in the future, thank you.
Jessica, did you want to add anything?
Nothing to add, but just echo the congratulations for all the hard work and their achievements.
And then Dr. Cleveland?
Well, again, congratulations to you, it is an incredible accomplishment, and we're so proud for you and for the hard work and how it's paid off for you. And we just thank you for representing your high school, this community in such a positive way, and we know that you'll continue to do great things, but we really wanted to celebrate this evening that particular accomplishments this, this past week and, and, and the, in the final championship, so congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
All right, our next is our commendation for the Cleveland High School football team for their championship win, and once again, Todd Rush, our Executive Director of Athletics, will present.
Okay, another exemplary program in the state of New Mexico and in our district. Now I'd like to recognize the Cleveland High School Football Program and head coach Robert Garza for winning the program's sixth with an asterisk because it could be seventh had it not been the pandemic 2020 year, but sixth state championship on November 30th. This championship is the 50th for Cleveland and the 101st for Rio Rancho Public Schools. Coach Garza and his program are perennial powers in the state, in fact, this was the seventh consecutive practice on Thanksgiving, which means they've been to state, the state championship that many times. So just an amazing, an amazing program. So as they are recognized perennial powers, they knocked off the previously unbeaten and number one-ranked LaCova Bears in the championship game with a dominant performance. The team improved each week to the champions they are today, which is a testament to the work ethic of the Cleveland student athletes and coaches. And now I am honored to introduce head coach Robert Garza and members of the 2024 New Mexico State Football Champion, Cleveland Storm.
First off, thank you for having us here tonight, it's a, it's a privilege and honor to be here. I guess I'll introduce, I brought, I brought three guys with me that were big-time contributors for, to what we did this season. First we got outside linebacker Connor Steele, our quarterback Jordan Hatch, and one of our wide receivers, Jacob Maldonado. Can't say enough for what these guys did. I, I'd just like to start by saying thank you for all you do for us, you know, Rio Rancho, there's a lot of consistency in the program, they were just, just listening to them talk about their cross-country program, and you know, the consistency we've been able to have at Cleveland, winning, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and say we've won seven state titles, you know, since we've been open since 2009, you know, we've played in five of the last six state championships, and I, I think it has more to do with you guys allowing us to do what we do and, and letting us be good coaches, and you know, it's. And, um, you know, it's, people ask me all the time, what separates you guys from APS or Los Cruces? And I, I tell them all the time, it's, it's the support here in Rio Rancho. Um, and it starts, it starts with you guys up, up top. So thank you, thank you very much for, for allowing us to, to do what we do and, and to work the way we do. You know, about this season, incredible journey. It was, it was one of those feel-good moments for us. You know, we lost the state championship game last year to this very same La Cueva team. Going into the season, you know, everybody had the question marks on us. It was, you know, La Cueva's, you know, the preseason, basically the champions. And these guys knew, um, we had a work cut out for us and didn't start the, the season off the way we, we wanted to. We actually lost our first game of the year, started out 0-1. But the work these guys put into it, snap off 12 consecutive victories, beating the number two seed and the number one seed back-to-back games, two undefeated teams on to win the state championship is just a testament to these guys and the way they work, the commitment. We require a lot of these guys, you know, where we work before school, we work after school. And it, it's quite a grind and I'm just happy to be here and thrilled to be their coach. Any, uh, I, I'm sure you'd like to hear from these guys a little bit.
If you guys are willing, are you guys willing? Anyone who wants to, you're welcome to, to go and talk. Jordan's really excited, I can see on his face.
I just want to say thank you to Coach Garza and the coaching staff as well. They work hard every day and they show the same consistency that we do. And it's an honor to go out there and play for Cleveland. Thank you.
Um, yeah, like you said, I mean, I'm very grateful for our coaches. They put us in position to win. We've been successful at that. I'm thankful for all our blessings and they come from God. So thank you guys for having us here.
Once again, I'm grateful for all of our coaches. Without them, we, we couldn't have done half the stuff that we've done. Grateful for God, our Father. He helped us, lead us in the right direction and got us here. And thank you guys for having us here. It's truly a blessing.
Thank you, guys. We're gonna clap. All right, we have to say our words too. They is back too. That just has to happen. You know, I just, such a huge congratulations. You guys are so impressive. I always love when I'm over at that stadium, I get to see all the pictures of everyone out there and you're looking so rough and tough. And we just have impressive young men, impressive heroes. You do, you put so much in. I can remember when Jordan was a four-year-old playing soccer and so I'm really glad he made that change over to football. Um, and so it is just congratulations. When I'm not, you know, I don't always get out to games, but I'm always watching and reading and seeing how it goes. And so, yeah, when we first started out this season, it was like, oh, okay, what's gonna happen with Cleveland this year? Because we always have such a strong team and you guys did, you did amazing and you just pulled it up. And, and so congratulations for, for all your hard work.
I'd like to say congratulations and I have a challenge for you guys in Rio Rancho Cross Country. Officially, it's six to six. So you gotta go back and tell those teammates, next year, is the Cleveland Storm football gonna be seventh? First, or is the Rio Rancho Boys Cross Country gonna be seventh first? It's great to be a champion, man, let me tell you. Congratulations. You guys, fabulous job. Coach, great job.
My pleasure, board member Sean. Comment. Congratulations to all of you for your hard work and dedication again, for your parents and coaches. And our whole across country coaches, I forgot to mention them. But, um, you know, we're all broke together and my best wishes to you in the future. Thank you.
Jessica, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just wanna congratulate Coach Garza and the boys and they're so fun to watch year after year. And it, it's so fun to know that they realize that comes from hard work, that it's not something that's just given to women. Congratulations to them.
She was there cheering very loudly and very enthusiastically. And it was a pleasure to be there and watch that victory. I mean, it was an amazing game. And, uh, and we try to be, you know, we, we certainly do compete with class. And, but you can also get a little humor in things. And we talk about, you know, there was kind of a crown championship at the beginning and now everybody kind of resented that. Was down on the field and I was hearing this chant behind me and I thought for a minute, what are they saying? What are they saying? And what I kept hearing was overrated, overrated. So it was all in the spirit of good fun. And, but what a wonderful accomplishment and what a great win for you all. And we're just so proud for, for your win that Saturday. So congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming in. I know it's not always the fun to hear going into the board, but we are excited to see you and share it with the public. So thank you so much for being here. All right. All right, we'll now move into the public comment portion of our meeting. And tonight, we receive public comment through our online form and we also have public comment here in the, in the boardroom that's in person, sorry, I'm numbering. Okay. And so we'll go ahead and we'll start with the public comment that came in, that came in through our online form. And we received 31 public, online public comments for this evening's meeting. And there were four and these were from Natalie Stovall, Gina Armenta, Armenta, Cheryl Daniels and Madison Madrid, supporting safe space signs in schools. There were 25 from Tom Plummer, Henry Sivette, Irma Appenzeller, Nancy Cleason, Juanita Hall, Alex Madrid, Paul Gosco, Georgia Madrid, Raul Madrid, Julie Zimmerman, Daniel Zimmerman, Karen Sivette, Karen Green, Rudolph Acosta, and George Diamond, Deborah Ferris, Lynn Blackman, R. Gordon Feats, Tim C. and Penny Elzany Petter, Roy Weaver, Evangeline Edwards, Sam Dece, Michael Finch, Dana Alanas and Petra Alanas in support of the board policy and not in support of having the safe space signs. And there was one from Jay Phoff requesting that games be unblocked. And I agree, yeah. And one from Quinn Hollerback regarding Puesta del Sol and the committee researching options for preschool. So those are our online public comment. So we have nine in-person public comment tonight. And, and just a moment, we'll get to that. And there's always just a few things I want to go over. And so first off, we have three minutes to give your public comment. And JC will start a timer when you start talking. And if it goes off during your public comments, if you would just please finish and, and go sit back down and so that we can get to all of our public comment tonight. And the board is not able to respond to that public comment unless we have it as an agenda item that might be talked about during that agenda item. But otherwise, we won't be able to say anything back. And so with that, we'll go ahead and start with our first public comment, which is from Rena Stone. From Rena. Rena, okay.
School board president, school board members, Dr. Cleveland, community members and colleagues. My name is Rena Stone and I would like to comment on the current RRPS procedure prohibiting safe space signs for LGBTQ plus students. I know that one point that we can all agree on is that all our students need and deserve an education free from fear. For LGBTQ students, this is too often not the case. We should all know by now that LGBTQ plus students are at greater risk of feeling depressed and hopeless. According to recent survey data from the CDC, at least 50% of LGBTQ plus students have considered suicide and 20% have attempted suicide just last year. Today, LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus students globally are experiencing more instances of bullying and discrimination than their non-LGBTQ plus peers. This causes them to feel unsafe, to miss class and many times drop out of school completely. The CDC says, being in a healthy supportive environment can help LGBTQ plus students thrive and help lessen some of the mental health disparities they face. Given that this group of students is so vulnerable and that humans are by nature social creatures, this makes the need for safe space obvious. And yes, every classroom should be a safe space for all our students. The word safe space, though, can mean many things. I think for our LGBTQ plus students, it means a safe place, safe from judgment, harassment and bullying, things that are often hard to find in the general population. By creating obvious safe space with, with signage for this group of students, it will tell them that RRPS cares about them and their well-being. And because teachers are all different too and should not feel forced to provide an LGBTQ safe space, this allows teachers who feel comfortable doing so to come forward and students won't have to find out by trial and error which teacher will hear them out on LGBTQ plus issues. And teachers who are uncomfortable doing so won't be put on the spot. Again, every classroom should be a safe space, but LGBTQ plus students need to know where their safe space can be found. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next is Andy Bryan.
Dr. Cleveland, Madam President, members of the board, thank you for your time. This guy again, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I promise I won't make a habit of it for too much longer. But last board meeting, a few members of the community, along with some more digitally today, shared their opinion on the work that we've been doing regarding safe space signs. And for the sake of clarification, I want to make sure that I am being as accurate in my own information. Andy, write by the dialogue that we're hoping for as the board considers all sides to this discussion. It was stated last meeting that supporting gender-affirming care is akin to indulging the dysmorphia of a person with anorexia. However, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Urological Association, the American Productive Medicine, the American College of Physicians, the American Association of Clinical Endocrinology, and many more politely disagree. Each one of these prestigious organizations support gender diversity and support those who experience gender dysmorphia. And what we advocate for here for Rio Rancho Public Schools aligns with their experienced and evidence-based opinions. And I trust that as a board of education, you appreciate the weight of that. It was also stated last meeting that our goals were anti-Christian and I hope that when that was said, the first thing you thought of was the image that I painted last time I spoke of a world where drastically different people lived and learned side by side. Each with the supports that they need, the visibility and appreciation they deserve and the dignity due each individual. Never have we thought our needs greater than anybody else's. Similar to how we as educators accommodate each student according to their needs. Seeing as those who came to speak for bibles in the libraries earlier this year got their wish within the week, I do have a hard time seeing Rio Rancho as an institution that attacks Christian values in any way, shape or form. We always wanted inclusion for all involved. Those like us and those unlike us, knowing full well that we're not the only ones who wish to see ourselves represented in Rio Rancho Public Schools. That said, as we've been approaching you about this for over the past year, doing the math in regards to the reports that President Galbraith gives about public comment each meeting, you've received probably about a hundred comments regarding this, if not more.
Hey, Andy, will you pause for one second? I just want to make sure that we're here. Do we need to switch microphones really quick? I don't know if you can pause him really quick. I just don't want it going in and out and that means people are missing some of the things that you're seeing. And so let's just make sure that, that it's working for you. Sorry to interrupt you. I just want that to. I just, I just don't want that to. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As we've been approaching you about this for over a year at this point, you've no doubt received around a hundred comments regarding this, if not more. And while I know that I have taken up plenty of the board's time and don't plan on doing it for much longer, so I can not hog the mic. I am curious how many more comments it will take before the board acknowledges that this is a concern within the community that you were elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Billy Healan.
Hello, Board President Galbraith, Board members, Dr. Cleveland, I'm Billy Healan again. As you know, I'm the president of Rio Rancho School Employees Union and I'm an elementary school teacher here in our district. I'm actually here today to express my deep concern about the potential move to relocate public comment on the agenda. Public comment is a cornerstone of democratic governance. It allows community members to voice their opinions, concerns and ideas directly to the board. Moving public comment later in the meeting could significantly diminish its impact. Many community members may not be able to stay through the introductory comments, executive commendations and reports when they're available, potentially silencing their voices. I urge the board to reconsider the change. Public comment should be as close to the beginning of the meeting as possible, ensuring maximum public participation and transparency. Thank you.
Our next is Anna Mayberry.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, President Galbraith, esteemed board members. We're here to share what we are doing on a consistent basis at Puesta del Sol to ensure academic achievement and student success in all areas of our students' lives. We are also going to provide you with statistical evidence proving we're making continuous improvements in all areas at Puesta. We work intentionally to foster a positive learning environment in which all students have equitable access to their education along with the opportunity to learn at high levels. We sincerely believe all students are capable of high levels of learning and success. At Puesta, we work hard to build strong relationships, build and maintain strong community that functions more like a family, be positive role models and to support the development of social and emotional skills in our kids. All of this is crucial to ensuring academic achievement along with leading students to becoming contributing members of society for the present, present and our future. Our school administration has created a stable, respectful profession and positive environment, which gives the entire community the best opportunity to be successful. They're actively involved in grade level professional learning committees. They facilitate data studies that are completely student-focused. They facilitate student leadership committee meetings with a focus on improving academics through data analysis. The administration produces a weekly staff newsletter, which includes several videos and/or pictures showcasing instructional best practices from Puesta's staff and students. We'll send you a separate email showcasing the staff and student work. Post-observation conferences are held with, as 30-minute meetings to discuss what the teachers are doing wrong along with a conversation about next steps to guide the teachers' practices towards improving student success. Our administration applied for and received a grant from PED for structured literacy, a rigorous, rigorous teacher professional learning facilitated by a literacy instructional coach, which we will explain a little later. We have bi-weekly tracking meetings to discuss specific and immediate needs of students to ensure all their needs are being met. And we initially initiate, facilitate and/or plan the following items.
Our next is Jessica Metz.
Hello, Dr. Cleveland, President Galbraith and respected board members. I'm Jessica Metz. I'm a third grade teacher at Puesta. Some things the staff are doing at Puesta. We are learning on targets and I-Ken statements, our New Mexico dash goal, which is focused on student improvement. The goal is for 100% of teachers to explicitly post, communicate and utilize learning targets daily. We've created and continue to create proficiency scales for these learning targets. The purpose is to guide students in understanding where they, where they are in their progress toward attaining a proficiency, toward a learning target, a grade level standard, with the use of the I-Ken statements. Our school has an intervention, school-wide model for the past three years. This is a dedicated block in our daily schedule for every grade level to focus on very specific skills students need practice with, possibly re-tat or opportunities for enrichment. These skills are based on weekly data and progress monitoring. During this block in the schedule is also when students go or walk to their reading or math intervention class, speech, social work, resource class or gifted class. In addition, some grade levels switch students within the grade level. This ensures that no students are missing core curriculum instruction. This is an important practice that provides equitable access to the core curriculum for all students. We've had after-school tutoring for many years. This year, we have seven tutoring groups after school. We have 12 various types of after-school clubs and programs that positively impact student attendance, engagement, student behavior and academic achievement. student attendance, engagement, student behavior, and academic achievement. Beginning in January, we'll have a school-wide Marzano training, which focuses on best practices for teaching, utilizing data, learning targets, and proficiency scales to enhance student achievement. Marzano has had tremendous success in all the schools they work with, and we are excited to see our successes from our work with Marzano. For data studies, we have extensive analyzing of data from iStation and NWEA, testing along with curriculum assessments and student work products to produce or to inform and drive instruction, interventions, MLSS, et cetera. We have a positive behavior intervention and supports program, which focuses on student academic growth and achievement. Monthly assemblies, we have monthly assemblies to highlight and celebrate student achievement and successes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Serenity O'Brien.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, President Galbraith, and members of the board. My name is Serenity O'Brien, and I'm the librarian at Puesta. In addition to our PBIS assemblies that we have, we also celebrate attendance. So our attendance initiatives, our students with perfect attendance for the month receive a certificate and prize. From January to May, students with perfect attendance each month will be entered into a raffle to win a grand prize, such as a $100 gift card for a restaurant, three runners per month for five months. Our goal is to improve student attendance, which in turn should impact and improve academic performance significantly. And my EA does the certificates, and I think this past month we had like 100, well over 100 students who earned it, so it was pretty significant. We have monthly grade-level assemblies focused on academics and attendance. Some of those details were mentioned above, and the goal of these assemblies is to highlight and celebrate students and the work that they're doing. Our structured literacy work, which we mentioned before, the structured literacy coach works collaboratively with all the teachers, K-5, special ed, general ed, and our support staff to support the effective implementation of literacy practices aligned with our school-site literacy plans. The coach provides targeted professional learning, small group and one-to-one coaching, and timely feedback while maintaining confidentiality and professionalism. The coaching support prioritizes student needs, utilizes data-driven decisions to create action plans, focuses on the essential ELA standards, and adheres to the district and school curriculum and instructional guidelines and procedures. Based on the school's NM dash plan and structured literacy key components, the focus of our support has been on the classroom environment within Layer One ELA instruction. The coach fosters open communication, actively participates in the school culture, and maintains detailed documentation to ensure accountability and progress. Importantly, the structured literacy coach's role is nonevalutive, focusing on supporting student and teachers' growth and success. Our NWEA, excuse me, and iStation goals, all of our teachers have class-wide goals, and they also support students in their individual goals. We have weekly MLSS, or multi-layered system of supports, meetings, where teachers analyze their student data, their work products, the progress, et cetera, and have in-depth and meaningful discussions based on that student data, teaching strategies, their next steps to inform their instruction and lead students to academic success. The student assistants, team chairs, attend these meetings to help discuss next steps for students in need. We practice culturally and linguistically responsive strategies, or CLR, strategies. These are student-focused best-practice strategies that ensure equitable access to learning and education. They foster high levels of student engagement, access, learning, and accountability. We have two reading interventionists who are working closely with our students to lead them to academic success through targeted skill practice in small groups and progress monitoring. As of December 6, 2024, they service 64 of our students. We also have two English language coordinators and a bilingual facilitator teacher who work with students to lead students to reading, speaking, and writing. Thank you.
Thanks. Our next is Sally Davis.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, President Galbraith, and members of the board, sorry. I'm going to pick up talking about Puesta del Sol, and Sally Davis, and I'm a third-grade teacher there. I've been there for nine years. She left off talking about two English language coordinators that we have on site and a bilingual facilitator teacher that work to lead students to reading, speaking, and writing proficiency in both English and Spanish. And then I was going to talk a little bit about students at Puesta and how they are involved in some of our initiatives. So the learning targets that we mentioned earlier, students are learning how to be active participants in their education through the utilization of learning targets and Ican statements. Students are learning how to reflect on their learning and analyze how they are progressing toward a learning target, learning what it takes to be proficient with grade-level standards, and we're working toward mastery. Students take NWA and iStation, and they set goals for themselves, and with the help of teachers, they create goals and state the needs to meet their NWA and iStation goals. Students also lead their conferences. Students present their academic products, grades, and goals to their families. Many include a reflection on their study habits and what they need to work on to achieve their learning targets, to include what they can do and how their teachers and families can help them. Some students even participate in their IEPs, or Individualized Education Program, in which they have the opportunity to reflect on their learning, academic progress, strengths, needs, and their goals. We also recently had our English spelling bee, and we also have a Spanish spelling bee. Students practiced with spelling patterns, roots, and vocabulary, and we just had 80 students participate in our English bee on December 6. The STEAM Lab, which the district has at all elementary schools now, I believe, originated at Puesta del Sol and is now offered district-wide as a related arts class. We also have 12 various types of after-school clubs, programs, which do positively impact student attendance, engagement, student behavior, and academic achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie Barber. I'm not sure if I'm seeing your last member. Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, President Galbraith, and respected board members. I'm Stephanie Barber. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Puesta del Sol. Two additional notes not related to academics but worth noting. Intel is expanding and adding 1,800 manufacturing jobs and 2,500 construction jobs. Puesta served the most Thanksgiving lunches out of the entire district, more evidence showing how important our school is to the community. Thank you for listening to our comments tonight. We hope that you'll take time to read through the document and review the data research, slideshow of academic highlights, artifacts of student success, and other documents we provided and will continue to update and provide. We'll have lots of success stories, and we know our students will continue to achieve great things. It's imperative that we keep our community intact so that we can continue to give our students every opportunity to succeed. We provide a positive, warm, diverse, interactive, safe, and engaging learning environment for all our students, and wholeheartedly believe that all students can learn. We have spent years building relationships with students to understand their needs and strengths to best lead them to success. If Puesta is repurposed, this work will be destroyed, and many of our students will be devastated. A lot of our work will be undone, and many of our students will have to start over. It's not responsible or academically wise to do this to our school community. Please give us the opportunity to continue this important work, and we'll continue to prove to you that we know our students well, and we'll do what it takes for them to be successful academically and to help them become contributing members of our community for now and in the future. Before we close, I just want to give some evidence of improvements at Puesta. Our goal is to improve steadily to earn the designation as a spotlight school. If we can continue at the same pace and level of improvement, this is a very realistic goal. We have tables showing our NAMASA data from last year and our current iStation data. The data reflected in these tables is evidence that our students are improving. The data also proves our results are comparable to half of the Rio Rancho Public Schools elementary schools. We showed growth in math, ELA, and attendance. We know that with our continued work and efforts, there is more growth and improvements to come. We have some copies that I left at my seat, so I apologize for you guys to have easier access to. And we just want to thank you guys for your time tonight, so we appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our last will be Robert Ortega.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Superintendent. I'm back again. This time, I did about a month and a half worth of research on the top 10 schools over the last four years across, I should say, the top 10 states for pre-K through 12th grade over the last four years. The top 10 states varied from year to year, but they all remained in the top 10. They just switched numbers. And I contacted a lot of them personally to ask what made them so successful in their pre-K program. We need pre-K, we want pre-K, and that's the main focus. Nine out of 10 of them said what made them so successful is that they incorporated all of their pre-K into their neighborhood schools, which improved attendance because the younger kids wanted to go to school with their older siblings, also improved attendance because the parents only had to go to one school versus going to two or three different schools. There was one state that said that they were in the top 10, but they made some drastic changes to the pre-K program. They started off with center-based, and they noticed that they weren't getting enrollment and the numbers that they had. So they switched, they followed suit, and they switched over to neighborhood school-based pre-K programs. And they also all adapted the same pre-K accredited program, and they went into three different sections. They went to the universal pre-K, tried to get as many three- and four-year-olds enrolled into a two-year program. They went to a traditional pre-K for four-year-olds that start late. And they also did a community-based pre-K. Not everybody went to public schools, so those that went to a private daycare that went to a pre-K all used the same curriculum, which the school would ask the community base to actually teach. The only difference was the employees for the public schools were certified teachers and the community base were not, but they were still getting taught along the same lines. And they also saw that the least amount of impact on the community was having them in the neighborhood schools. Yes, we do need pre-K here in Rio Rancho. We already have one center-based. Why can't we leave that at half-day for those that want to attend half-day? We can incorporate it in all our neighborhood schools, which would be a very low impact on our school district, on our transportation department, on our nutritional department, and our teachers. We're very hard to find teachers as it is these days, and to want to make another center and bring more teachers in, we can't even find some now to fill up the positions we have now. Let's keep the staff we have now. We don't need to lose anybody because we want to repurpose a school. We need to keep our staff here. We need to keep our people here. Look how many people we get every board meeting because we want to keep our community safe. We want to keep our communities intact. That would be ideal, and that would bring a lot more kids into our public school system instead of going out to charter schools and private schools. We need to keep them here. We have a great system, let's improve on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That is all of our public comment for tonight. So we'll now go to approve the consent agenda.
I mean, President, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Larry Tripp, second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries, 4-0. Okay, and the next part of our business of my meeting tonight is to go to our business portion. We'll start with the first item, which is to consider the approval for the Hall of Honor nomination. So we have Andrea Yarborough here, who's our Hall of Honor Chair.
Good evening, President Galbraith, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland. I'm here on behalf of the Hall of Honor Committee to present our two candidates for this year. The process for receiving Hall of Honor nominations begins with a broad media advertisement for the request for nominations. Nominations are accepted throughout the month of September. Eligible candidates may not be current employees, Hall of Honor Committee members, or board members. We do consider past nominations. We received eight current nominations, all quality candidates. The Hall of Honor Committee considered all eligible candidates and chose two based on the nominee, making a significant contribution to the education of Rio Rancho Public Schools. With that being said, I'm pleased to bring before you tonight the two candidates for the board's consideration to be inducted into the Hall of Honor. Our first nominee is Mark Leonard. Mark Leonard has been in education for over 30-plus years. He began working at Lincoln Middle School in 1990, where he taught science and was remembered well for creating an archaeological dig site at Lincoln Middle School. In 1996, he transitioned to teaching science at Rio Rancho High School. Mr. Leonard was dedicated to the education both inside and outside of the classroom. Mr. Leonard was very passionate about athletics and frequently volunteered at Rio Rancho High School athletic events, which included football and soccer. He regularly volunteered at the annual Rio Rancho High School Science Fair and built a successful astronomy club at Rio Rancho. Mr. Leonard was very involved in the community, teaching first aid, CPR, and he also volunteered for the Boy Scouts of America. I had the privilege of working with him and his son through the Boy Scouts of America. Mark also served as a ski patroller for Sandia Peak for 50 years. He retired from Rio Rancho High School in 2018. Our second nomination is Joan Vivins. Joan Vivins served in education for well over 17 years. She began as an educational assistant at Lincoln Middle School when Rio Rancho became its own district. In 1995, she became an administrative assistant to the principal at Mountain View Middle School. Ms. Vivins was dedicated to the staff, the students, and to her school. She volunteered for many student programs, including reading enhancement. She even was known to coach cheerleading when we were unable to find a cheerleading coach. Ms. Vivins also served as the first vice president of the Rio Rancho Public School Teachers Union, where she helped foster a community and support and aid for teachers across the district. The success of the union today can largely be credited to her hard work and her union role early on. Her commitment to both students and staff was unparalleled, and she undoubtedly has left a lasting legacy on the district. Ms. Vivins continued to work with the district until her passing in 2007. At this time, I stand for any questions.
And Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add anything?
Well, just that there were a lot of quality candidates, and we appreciate that. And Mark Leonard was with us on day one and started a school district. I remember him well, and he contributed a lot and then moved on to help us start Rio Rancho High School. And in anything he did, he did a really good job, really committed, and he's also committed to the community. And one of the things I always, I remember is there were a group of boys, and one of my sons was part of that group. And Mark Leonard would pick them up at 4:00 a.m. on the weekend to head up the mountain in the ski patrol, and they would get to work all day up there. And then at the end of the day, they would get to ski a little bit, and they'd get in the car, and they'd come home absolutely exhausted, about 8 o'clock, just almost exhausted. And all they could talk about is going back the next week. And so he reached out in the community in many different ways. He was an important fixture in our school district and just always such a positive force. Really did believe in active hands-on learning for kids. And so I think as an educator, he's a wonderful person to be nominated. And then my kids went through Mountain View, and of course, they knew Ms. Vivins, and you didn't run across her, you know, if you didn't follow the rules, you ended up at her desk waiting to see the assistant principal or principal. And yet, she was really good at talking with kids and trying to, you know, help them be a little bit better and try to get to just what it was that was maybe bothering them at that point. The kids liked her a lot. And so I think those are two wonderful candidates for consideration.
Thank you. So I was one of Mr. Leonard's, I wouldn't call him Mr. Leonard, because I was one of his students. And it's really sad when he passed away, just hearing all that. And so yesterday, as I was, I was looking through all of this, and I looked both of them up, and I came across Mr. Leonard's memorial page where people had left some comments, and it was so sweet. There were so many people from the ski patrol who were on there, and students, and just people in the community who had just wrote the sweetest things about him. And he did, I remember walking into Lincoln Middle School, the science hallway, and the whole hallway just stunk. And he was burning marshmallows to show us what carbon was. And he was burning marshmallows to show us what carbon was. And then another time, he stood there and he dropped like a big, it was like a bust. It was a big weight, and he dropped it, and it's, you know, swinging, and it was to show us that it would never come back and hit him. So he unflinchingly just stayed there in that spot. And then I had him again in high school, and I can remember just seeing, he brought in a couple pictures of his adventures that he would take. He just loved the outdoors. And so it's funny because I had a lot of wonderful teachers, but I really do remember some of the things that he taught me. And so I was just really delighted to see him for the Hall of Honor because truly is just a great man. I didn't know Ms. Vivins, I didn't really know her. I'm sure she was in my same spaces, but I did not know her. But I did try to look up some things too about her last night. What a just sweet individual. So I think both great for our Hall of Honor for this year. So Gary Tripp, do you want to add anything?
I was just very thankful that Rio Rancho High School didn't blow up while Mr. Leonard was there. But that meant that every student was totally engaged in their learning in his classroom. So there's not too many better. He was truly a teacher, and he loved, he loved being a teacher, and he was a mad-mad scientist. Great, great human being like you. I didn't know Mrs. Vivins, but I do honor the committee and thank them for their work. And I'm sure, I wish I was saying this, many great things about her. So I just apologize to the family if they're listening, but great candidates, I think. Thank you.
Do you want to add?
Just want to thank the committee for your work. They sent me two very worthy recommendations for the Hall of Honor, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Jessica, did you have any questions or anything?
No questions. Just also want to thank the committee for bringing forward great recommendations, and always nice to be able to honor people that have given so much to the district.
Okay, thank you. So I think with that, we can go for a motion on these nominations.
Make a motion that we approve Mark Leonard and Joan Vivins to be in the Hall of Honor.
Do you have a second motion? So we have a motion in a second, and all in favor on this?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our motion carries four zero. Thank you. Nice to see you, and thanks for coming.
And thanks to the committee.
Yeah, thank you. I know, there's, you know, we just have wonderful people in our community who have done so much, so thank you for those. And so for our next, we will consider the approval of graduation requirements for the class of 2029. So Janice Knaut and Amanda Bader will be presenting.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the school board, and Dr. Cleveland. We are here on behalf of Renee Sosteto that we said needed to go home because she couldn't speak. You guys don't know her language, so we're here just to review the notes from the meeting on 11/18, the workshop to go over the new graduation requirements for the class starting, the class that will graduate 2029. Rio Rancho Public Schools will continue to require 26 credits to graduate, which is two more than the state requirement, and remove the half-tech credit requirement. In addition to the state requirements, Rio Rancho is keeping the half-fine arts credit, keeping the additional fourth-year science requirement, not requiring Algebra II, but strongly recommending it for all students, and a full-year course of financial literacy for math credit will be offered. The alternative high schools, independent, cyber, and the skilled trades and technology center will continue to use the state requirements for graduation. We still require 26 credits to graduate for English, for math, for social studies, for science, one physical education, half a health credit, which will be completed in eighth grade, a half of fine arts, and as Dr. Cleveland spoke, two, eight elective credits with a two-semester block pathway of the student's choice. And Rio Rancho will continue to offer Algebra II and that full year of financial algebra or financial literacy for math credit. And we stand, the expert and I, for question.
Thanks for coming out. I do have a, I'm trying to decide if I have a question. So I was just thinking, because this hits our class of 2029, and yet we have, so I guess if we have a student, because, so is New Mexico waiving the Algebra II now? Does that make sense? Is all just for everyone across the state? I was just thinking, if you have a student who's like lacking something with those or with our tech credit, for instance, and it's coming off in the past, is there this leniency that we give, or are we, we're sticking to what they have for now until we?
For the current HB class?
So?
These will be the rules. If any student already in high school, they are held harmless to the HB 171 changes. It's the existing.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I had a student just, and she was at APS, but she came in and she was like, no more of this and no more of that. I'm like, that's not for you. But I just thought I, and I knew that, but I just was thinking about some of those students, if there is some sort of, you know, you know, just with some of those leniency with some of those things. So Gary Tripp, do you have any questions or?
I don't, thank you.
Beth Miller, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Jessica, you have any questions?
No, no questions.
And Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything?
No, I think they've covered it nicely.
Okay, okay. So you've sat here with us this whole time, we don't have any really good questions for you.
That's exactly how it was supposed to happen.
That's good, that's good. All right, so with that, we can go for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion, Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the graduation requirements for the class of 2029.
Gary Tripp, I'll second.
Okay, so a motion in a second. And Jacey, will you take a roll call vote for us on this one?
Secretary Tyler?
Yes.
Board Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Miller?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Your motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming up to me. Okay, our next item is going to be the second reading of Policy 209, Agendas in Order of Business. And Lauren Hatch, our chief legal counsel, will be presenting.
Can we get that a little larger? It would really be helpful. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland. Just here to present Policy 209 for its second reading. We, in the presentation during the first reading, I explained that the idea is to optimize the meeting by moving public comment after the reports. The intention there is to allow people to listen to the reports that might be given so that they can make comments about those reports and then have their comments occur before the board takes action on anything. Just to remind everybody, the board takes public comment in a written form 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And I think the vast majority of the comments are received in writing by the board. Also, this, moving the public comments, the live public comments in our agenda to after reports is consistent with what I understand our other local public bodies do, including the city and Sandoval County.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything for me?
I think, you know, Strachan has said it very clearly, sometimes there's information that people heard it might influence the comments that they're making. I think the other, you know, it's interesting, you know, it's almost the reverse of what's been said, you know? Don't want to listen to the reports, but we want people to listen to the comments we make. And so it's kind of an interesting, I think, kind of an interesting argument. One of the things we've also been asked is we have guests that come in, such as the mayor or such as private organizations. They bring checks, they bring other things. And many cases, they are coming to give something to the district, and they aren't wanting to sit through all of that. They kind of feel like they're being held hostage for a while, and they're not here to do business, they're here simply to make a donation or to be recognized for something. Also, with our students who are here this evening, our student athletes, many of them have other things to go home to, including homework and other projects or things that they're working on. And so for them to have to sit for 45 minutes an hour when they might want to go home and be doing some of those other things. So I think, you know, with regards to the folks who come to be recognized or to bring donations or do all that, they have often asked, as you know, have asked to be put at the beginning of that agenda so that they do not have to sit through, because they're not here to do that business. They're here for a completely different purpose. So that was the thinking behind it, and I think it's sound thinking.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Gary Tripp, do you have any questions on this one?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I think that, that just an opinion is we're a pretty big entity, and if there was a way to find a way to get a small agenda at every meeting, I think there'd be enough time to get everything in. And maybe that's the question, you know, in the future. How do we, how do we make things smaller? And that may mean more board meetings, I mean, down the road. But, but just an opinion, I think it's just, there's a lot of, we're in a complicated times or all the time, we're in the kid business. And so there's a lot of stuff every meeting.
And everything's important.
And it is, and it is, because it's important, if it's about your kid, it's important. Yep, so.
Beth, any questions?
No questions, thank you for your work.
Jessica, do you have any comments or questions?
I do have just some thoughts, I guess. I mean, I think that there's pros and cons to either way we do it. I think, you know, when I first started serving on the board, we rarely had public comment, and recently, we've had more public comment. And I think as a board, we could do a better job of making agenda items to actually address the issues that are being brought up in public comment, and then maybe we wouldn't be having this conversation. And at the end of the day, I think everybody's time's equally important. And so I think, again, that there's pros and cons to the different ways that we order the agenda. So I'm kind of split, I guess, on making the change. I do see the pros and cons. I think, you know, we do a great job of recognizing our kids, so I like Dr. Cleveland's point of, you know, making sure that we can allow the students that are being brought in to be recognized, have them earlier. But I also think if we were addressing some of the issues that have been hot public topics lately, we wouldn't be having long public comments, and that wouldn't matter. We also always have the ability to move agenda items around if need be. So I think at this point, you know, I would rather us potentially leave things how they are. Again, I want to make sure that it's easy for the public to come in and provide their comments as well, so.
I think the biggest change with that, really, because our students still come in, so it's just a move down from reports is really the biggest change. And we have, I remember a couple weeks ago, because we have the potential to have 30 minutes of public comment. Tonight, we had 27, and it's more than that when you think about the time that it goes in between those. And I do agree, I think we need to be better at addressing those things, and we've been trying to work on some of those things and the right way to address some of those things. But with everyone's busy schedules, we've been having a hard time getting some of those meetings put into place, or we could be better at addressing some of those things. So, yeah, so it is the change. So I do get concerned, you know, as I sat here and I kind of watched some of our, like we had our Sandoval, you know, county commissioner here, and we had the mayor here, and I could tell they really needed to get out the door, and we had a full 30 minutes of comment plus what came in from the, what came in from the forum. So really, I mean, it has the potential to be, I would say, about 35 minutes just with the movement and such. And so I think for the most part, it's not a big deal, but it is sometimes when we have those sort of things. And sometimes, you know, to Dr. Cleveland's points, those reports do hit on those things, and so it could be a good thing for individuals to be able to hear those reports, and then maybe they might even decide not to give some of their public comments or change what they, what they might say. So that's kind of, that's my thoughts on it. I don't know if there's other, if there's other discussion that we want to have or if we would like to try to move on it. It sounds like we might need to have a little bit more discussion. Does anyone else want to give some comments on your thoughts about it? No one else has?
Just one other thought too, and I know, you know, Lauren said this to me several times, the purpose of public comment is to address the board. And so as long as there's an opportunity to address the board before the board takes action, that's what's most important. And, and so it's, that's the purpose of public comment, and it's not necessarily other purposes. And it's, but I don't think, I don't think it'll make a huge difference, but just, you know, I noticed tonight, they all had a place to go. They had other things they needed to do. And you're right, there's been several times where mayor, county commissioner, someone has asked us to move it. And it's not because I think they're not interested in what we're doing, it's because they have another meeting to go to, there's another group they've got to see. And they feel bad getting up and walking out. It's very embarrassing to them. But you know, like tonight, our students get up and they walk out. Well, they should, because this is a school night, and most of them have things to do at home. And so it's really trying to accommodate, we always say, students first, students have an opportunity that are here to leave, but also other people who have given their time to contribute in some way. And public comment is a contribution too, and I'm certainly not, not saying that it is not, it certainly is. But I think you respect those folks who come from the community, and they have other commitments as well, rather than to sit through all of that.
With that, I'm actually going to go ahead and make a motion to approve Policy 209, Agendas in Order of Business for board meetings. So we have a motion by President Galbraith in a second, by Beth Miller. And we'll go ahead and go to a roll call vote on this one.
Secretary Tyler?
No.
Board Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Miller?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Your motion carries three one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, our next items are, they're all first readings, and I'm going to go ahead and read them all out. Mike, you're giving all of, yes, you're giving all the next ones. So I'm going to go ahead and read out all of them so that Mike Chavez is able to just kind of move through them all, and we can ask questions as we go through. So our next items, items four through seven, are going to be the first readings of Policy 711 for a drug-free workplace employee. And then our next would be the first reading of Policy 722, Termination or Discharge of Employees. And the next would be the first reading for Policy 7 through 7, Medical Leave, and then the first reading of Policy 738, Non-Medical Leave. And Mike Chavez will be presenting, he's our Executive Director of Human Resources.
I know this, Mike, and David are coming. One of the things, I would just have you recall, we have had a speaker come a couple of times who's asked us to work at the drug-free workplace and alcohol and tobacco and some of those things. And so I was coming and did a very good presentation, and not all of this, but some of this is an attempt to address some of the issues and concerns that were raised during that presentation.
Yeah, we just had, that was recently, that's something.
Yeah.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. Thank you for having us here. We are here this evening, and I say "we" because I'm here with my colleague David Mann, who's obviously much younger than I am and has a much better accent here. And we're here to present to you this evening for your consideration some modifications and some updates to four of the personnel board policies. We actually have more than four to eventually present to you, but we thought, rather than overwhelm you, we would start with these four. So at this point, I'm going to defer to Mr. Mann, and he's going to go through some of these changes. I will certainly be happy to interject as needed, but a lot of this did come about, as Dr. Cleveland pointed out, from requests from an organization or changes to New Mexico rule or state statute.
And Mike does have a great accent, for the record. It's a pleasure to work with him and the HR folks, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. I'm just going to go through these at a very superficial level. I know you've had a chance to see them and review them, and I don't want to go through every nitpicky detail. But we work closely, Legal Department worked closely with Mike, with his team in HR, with Peggy, to make needed changes, mostly changes that were required by law, and then some changes that we just felt were sound policy decisions and that we recommend to you for consideration. So by way of the drug-free workplace, as as, as Dr. Cleveland mentioned, we did have a representative of PD come in to remind us of the need to make changes. There are, in fact, rules, the rule was changed or there was a new rule implemented, I should say, called the Tobacco, Alcohol, and Drug-Free Act. And we already had a drug-free policy in place. So we'll, and, and we also have a tobacco policy in place. But what we felt was appropriate was to merge some of the contents of that tobacco policy into this one. And we'll come before you on another date to propose eliminating the tobacco policy. And this is then blending those two and then adding needed changes from the rule. So in a nutshell, what it does is this applies to employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors. So that would include visitors that come to, say, a football game or a performing arts event. It creates new definitions, prohibited legal substances, because of course tobacco is legal if you are old enough to purchase it. But we are prohibiting it on our campuses along with any tobacco-related devices, liquid vape pens, et cetera. Illicit drugs, so that would be Schedule 1 drugs are, are banned from our campuses. Schedule 2 through 4 drugs with a prescription are fine, but without a prescription would be illicit. And then mood-altering substances is really a catch-all in the rule. And that's, you know, inhalants, things that you could get high from, but that are not necessarily drugs. So that's defined in here. The other, the third out of the four key things to touch on is that as far as folks in safety-sensitive positions, we've just clarified by way of policy that they'd be subject to testing following an accident. And we've sort of expanded it to so, security personnel, those who administer medications to students. And that's in part due to the liability of, of those safety-sensitive positions. And then the fourth key point is, except in unforeseen circumstances, we would have a member of security and a member of HR accompany an employee to be tested in the event there has been an accident or we have reasonable suspicion that they may be under the influence of an illicit substance or a prohibited legal substance. So those are the main changes there. I could take questions now or we could move on to the next one. Take questions at the end. Do you have a preference?
Yeah, let's do questions now and then we can go into the next, the next policy.
Who again would be going with security?
A member of the Human Resources Department. More than likely, one of the personnel investigators would accompany one of the security team members to transport. We would never send a single person alone. And so more than likely, we have, we, we currently have four members of the Personnel Investigations Team. They're all former law enforcement officers. And because very often, this may lead into some sort of investigation if we're sending somebody for testing in some situation, it's, it's, it's best practice to send one of each person, one of each personnel.
My question, and it's just a, it's maybe already covered, but would an administrator go? I mean, if that person is not available. I mean, is there a fifth word that needs to be added or administrator?
No, because, because the way we worded it in there was unless, except for in emergency situations or extenuating circumstances. I can't remember exactly how we put it. Exigent circumstances. It would be those two people that would transport the person. The administrator, the supervisor, has to be the one that calls us and makes the call saying, I believe this person is impaired. No one else but a supervisor can, can make the, the judgment call that they believe that a person is impaired and needs to be tested. If there's suspicion, anytime that there's an accident, a person automatically is sent for testing. That's part of our policy.
I think there's also a concern.
Yeah.
Sorry. I think there, there's also concern right now in particular. We just have so many needs on our campus. Removing campus administrators for that kind of purpose could put a real hardship on the school. And so we really prefer them to stay at the school site whenever possible. And we, we think very conscientiously about even meetings now where we would pull administrators off of campuses. And there's not one left to be able to handle things that come up. So they're spread pretty thin.
Yes, ma'am, that's a good point. We, we don't always know how long the testing will take. And then after the testing, we have an obligation to take the person home. We cannot allow them to, to retrieve their vehicle and to drive once we have the suspicion that there may be impairment. We don't know after the test. We have to wait for the results of the test to know for sure whether, unless it's typically a blood alcohol or a, an alcohol test.
I want to stress again, you know, the, and I, I don't, I mean, we, we say it and, and you all certainly have been very proactive about getting that information out. But if people have alcohol problems or other drug-related problems, we have help for them. And they have to just step forward and ask for it. I didn't know this, and so I hope it's true. And, and so I have not had it directly, but maybe one of you, maybe Lauren, David, you know. But there are not, someone told me there are no longer coping for mental health visits. Do you know if that's true? I had someone tell me that the other day. That's true. And so my only point is we, we have ways to help people. And we are very willing to work with employees if they will come forward and identify that they have a need. We have, we have resources to help. But that help doesn't, doesn't really kick in very effectively once there's been an automobile accident, someone has been hurt, property has been damaged, other kinds of things. So just a plea for people, if you, you have those issues, you need to contact HR and HR can help you with additional resources. So we do care about our employees. And we know that this can be a, a very damaging, have a damaging impact on individual and families. But we do stand ready to help. You need to ask for the help before there's a problem like this.
Yes, and that's a, that's an excellent point, Dr. Cleveland. We do have a very, very strong employee assistance program. We offer the first three visits for free, but we will, we will add more visits if the Employee Assistance Program contacts us. They don't tell us who, who they're talking about. They'll simply call us and say, we, we need to do a little more work with this person to help them get into a program or to get connected with a counselor that they can afford or something like that. And we are always happy to provide them with, with, you know, a couple more, three, two, three, four more visits if that's what it takes to help, help the person out in order to help them get into the, the right program or the right fit for a counselor or something like that. We also included that in our policy. As you'll see, that in, in addition to, you know, the, the situation that they might find themselves in being tested and so on, we also included in the policy that we do have the, the Employee Assistance Program to help people if they find themselves in these predicaments.
Matthew, you have any questions?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Jessica, do you have any questions on the policy?
My only, I guess, comment was, and so it, it could also be a question. Is the beginning part of it seems more like a problem statement to me, which the first paragraph, which isn't in line with how we do the other policies or isn't also in line with policy writing that I'm familiar with? And so I was just wondering how much of that first paragraph, if any of that is required from the act or if that was just something that we changed to include our earlier version?
Madam President, I remember Tyler. It, it is not a requirement in either the Federal Drug-Free Workplace Act or in this new rule that, that we have essentially a, a statement at the beginning. Effectively, if the, when you look at the red lines, they, there was already one there in our original policy. And so what we did is we took the existing one and revised it. But it, it isn't essential. And if, if you feel it isn't necessary, we could pull it.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's a lot of unnecessary language at the beginning of the policy. I do think that, you know, almost just going down to, it's essentially the last statement almost to reduce the significant harm to individuals. I think that portion of it, you know, could be, could be helpful. And it does kind of lay out, again, some of the substances that we're including. But that's included later in the definitions, I believe. So, I don't know, I just felt like it's a little bit, again, just a horrible problem statement versus policy.
Madam President, we'll work on that.
Okay. I mean, I'm looking over. I hadn't really thought about it that way, but I can, I totally see what Secretary Tyler's saying. So, yeah, if you want to review it, we can look again at it. That'll be good. Anything else on this policy? Okay, Mike can go on to the next one.
Right. The next policy is a little more simple. So this, this policy has to do with termination and discharge of employees. We recognize that it's been the practice in the district to, to determine that someone has abandoned their job after they failed to report without an excuse for a certain number of days, about, about three or four days. And that's been our practice, but it hasn't been clearly enshrined in policy. And so this would be a cleanup to bring the policy in line with practice. And in specific, what it clarifies for the benefit of administrators and supervisors is that after three days of failure to report, either over the phone or in person, without an excuse. Let's bring it down. So here's job abandonment. So I'll, I'll, I'll read it a little bit. So if, if the employee fails to report to work to make contact with their supervisor or report their absence in any other fashion, then essentially their supervisor will contact HR. And that kicks into, to affect this process where by 8:00 AM on the fourth consecutive day of failure to report, they will be considered to have abandoned their job. And so in effect, it's, it's distinguishing this from discharging an employee. We would not consider it a discharge. We would consider it a resignation. And that's, that would be the proposal. This would align with essentially what we've been doing for, for some years. Do you have any questions about that?
Gary Tripp, any questions? Jessica, any questions on this one?
No.
And Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything? We would just have to spell abandonment rate, I think, is the, is the big. Yeah, other than that. Yeah, okay. All right, we can go on to the next one, it sounds like.
Next policy is medical leave. And this has been revised to reflect some recent changes to the law and to promote some consistency. So the first substantive change is to, to clean up the definition of child and parent to bring those definitions into line with the Family Medical Leave Act. And, and really what it does is it, it makes those definitions more expansive. Those definitions being more expansive now, it would allow, for example, a, someone who stood in loco parentis to a child when that child was growing up. Or I should say the reverse. If there was a child who had a parent or an adult figure who stood in loco parentis and that child had grown up and become our employee and that adult figure who stood in loco parentis was, was in need of care, then that employee might be able to actually take some time off to, to provide assistance. And so that, it really is a bit more expansive and that falls in line with the FMLA. What we also changed, if we go down a little bit in the policy, is we were finding that it was difficult for the catastrophic leave program that we have in place. There was a cap that said, or I should say a floor, that said you had to have at least 400 hours before you could donate into that bank. So the number of eligible employees that could donate was pretty slim because that's a lot of hours to. So we halved it to 200. And so if you now have, if you're an employee and you, you want to assist because someone needs catastrophic leave, you only have to have 200 hours, not 400. And that should expand the pool and increase the opportunity for, to replenish that, that. And then the last substantive change is we, is the, so there's a breast pump act at the state level and the federal level. And we've now enshrined that in policy. It, the text here in the policy conforms very, very closely to the statute. And so this is, this is a benefit and a right for, for employees who breastfeed to be able to pump in the workplace. And, and it provides some protections and some clarity on how that works. And then it also provides protections for pregnant, pregnancy, childbirth, and related conditions. Right at the end there, that we, it reminds employees that as the employer, we are required to engage in an interactive process with, with folks who are expecting or are working on in vitro fertilization, anything associated with childbirth and pregnancy. There are protections there that they can be guaranteed time off. It's not an additional leave, like sick leave or annual leave. They will use their existing leave. Or if they don't have leave, they can, there, we are required to give them leave without pay. But we, but we wouldn't deny that leave. And so it's a protection, not necessarily a new benefit.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, questions?
The only thing I don't understand is related medical conditions. Pregnancy, childbirth, but I don't understand that third part.
Related, so that would be, Board Member Trip, members of the board, Madam President. That would be, it's, it's quite expansive.
Okay.
Law defines all the different.
So there's a bunch of categories.
One, for example, one would be if you're seeking federalization treatment, then that would be related condition.
Thank you.
Jessica, any questions, comments?
No, thank you.
And Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything on this? I, this is, looks great. I think it's in line with, you know, what we should be doing. I hope especially on this last one, though, that employees feel, I just, I hope as we go, you know, it's in our policy. And I just really hope that employees who are experiencing anything with those things that they really feel like they can ask for those, for those things without anyone making them feel like it's a burden in any which way. So I think it's a great thing to have there. I just hope that that really, you know, that they have that feeling.
I think that's a very good question, Madam President. I, I do think that at this point, I think that employees have become very comfortable contacting our benefits department. We have really excellent employees over there. And I think by adding this in, it gives, it helps give administrators a little more guidance. We do training with our administrators on all of our leave processes. And we encourage the supervisors, and, and they're, they're very good about it, to have the employees, to, to refer them to the benefit, to their benefit specialist. And so this gives them something to fall back on. And they, they are very good about falling back on the board policies and saying, yeah, you have a right to that. It's right there in the board policy. Or, no, we can't do that because this is the way it's written, but we can do this instead. So, but that's a very good question. And that's one of the things we've worked really hard on and in the HR department, is helping people feel comfortable to come forward for those things.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Did you have anything else on that?
I, I wanted to go back to one, if I could, really quickly. I always want to be very careful if I say something that it, I've said the right thing. And I don't want people to think I'm not, or to cause any problems, say that. I went back and looked up and it's Senate Bill 317. And it was signed by. I went back and looked up and it's Senate Bill 317 and it was signed by, uh, Governor Michelle Lujan-Gresham, um, April of 2021 and became effective January 1, 2022. And, uh, it will, it will expire unless reenacted in, um, December 31st, 2026. And among the components of that bill, it prohibits cost sharing, including the imposition of deductibles for behavioral health services covered by any health plan delivered, issued for delivery or renewed in the state of New Mexico. The purpose is to ensure that all New Mexicans receive equal treatment with respect to health plan coverage for behavioral health services. Um, the application of the prohibition on cost sharing or deductibles for behavioral health services must be standardized, uh, must be standardized across all subject health plans by January 1, 2022. So I, I, I wanted to be sure that I had spoken correctly about that. But if people have behavioral health issues, they can go and they can get help and they do not even have to pay the deductible. And so it's really, the whole point is to encourage people regardless of when your financial, um, resources to be able to seek behavioral health help when you need it. And including in that behavioral health, I believe, are addictions. So, um, I just wanted to be sure that, that I had presented that correctly.
And that's, that's excellent information. And, and the thing I want to reiterate with the employee assistance program is it's almost like an intake program where they will, they will, you know, help you. They'll work with you right away, try to help you get, um, you know, stabilized, if you want to think of it that way. But they'll also help connect you with, because they're not going to be your, your counselor for, forever. But they're going to work with you. This, the program that we use will work with you to, to help you to establish, um, a relationship with a provider that's going to be helped, be able to help you on a long-term basis. And that's why, um, employees utilizing that employee assistance program is so important.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else? Okay. All right, we can go on to the, thank you.
You're doing a great job. So 738 is non-medical leave and just two substantive points on this one. It's just to bring it up to date with the law. So one, there's some clarification, uh, provided on leave associated with Grow Your Own Teachers Act. We know very little about that from the state yet, but we've enshrined it in here in the event that more information about that is forthcoming. So there's a, there's a sort of a placeholder for that, that there is leave that will be provided pursuant to the Grow Your, Grow Your Own Teachers Act. And then the more substantive one, and it's toward the end, I think, if you scroll right down to the bottom, is, um, we have created the policy for, uh, domestic abuse leave. Again, like, um, uh, the, uh, pregnancy-related leave protections, it's not an additional benefit, but it is a job protection. And so what this provides is that, um, um, if, if you are experiencing domestic abuse, if an immediate family member is experiencing domestic abuse, uh, if you need to visit an attorney for, uh, to, as a result of that, or attend a court hearing as a result of that, et cetera. There, there are protections, uh, for your job. So you can take the leave. We're required to allow you to take that leave and I believe it's up to 14 days in, in the, in a year. Uh, but that's, that's a, that's New Mexico law, recent law change, and we're just bringing it up to speed in policy.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board? Beth, anything? Jess, Jessica, do you have anything on this one?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. And Gary, you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess I, I just have a question about, is somebody who is experiencing domestic abuse, how, are we giving them a time limit before they have a police report or a order of protection or, or are we just saying, which I'm okay with. In fact, I would even promote it. If you're experiencing it, then I trust it's occurring. So is there, what's the verification?
Madam President, uh, member Trip, it, we, it's, it's going to be case by case. So it just, the, the law says, um, that we can ask for it and they should provide it as soon as practical. And so what we're asking is that we'll, we'll work with them on a case by case. If, if they're out, we'll, we'll follow up, give them a little time, try to be respectful. Um, it's not that we're, we're going to hold them to 48 hours or 72 hours. That it won't be, um, a hard line like that, unless you recommend it otherwise.
I guess what I recommend is that we'll help you, but we have to stay consistent. I was a principal that was very inconsistent, that would get in trouble because, but so, so I think we, we have to maybe give assistance from HR, but we need to get it within the week or something like that or, but that way it's consistent to all victims, you know what I mean? That we don't show priority. I mean, because I'll be a softie person in HR that would say, you know, then somebody else may not be, you know, they may say, I need to follow rules, which they're a rule follower, which is good, you know? So I'm just thinking out loud.
I think that's a very good point, board member Trip. Um, again, the, the, the good news is we, we have, um, a number of, um, uh, personnel investigators in our department that are former law enforcement. Two of them work for Rio Rancho Police Department. So if it happens in our city, um, they have access, uh, to folks right across the street, um, and are able to check. You know, the, the consistency part, a lot of that has to do with how quickly a report is available, things like that. Um, but we do, we do work very closely with the folks. But the bottom line would be, you're, you're, you're exactly right. Everyone would be required to, to follow the same protocols and practices. Um, not that everyone is going to be able to provide that information in this, maybe the same timeline, but we certainly wouldn't be able to give a pass to anybody. And that makes perfect sense.
And we don't have to have it in policy. It could be protocol. Yeah.
It could be more, it's could be more practice and procedure. Um, but we would certainly make sure that we were very consistent with everybody.
Yeah. It's such a touchy subject.
It's a hard thing to address.
We have very compassionate people.
Yeah. Any other questions from anyone on these policies? Do you guys need any sort of clarification on anything or we?
I have my, my, uh, my notes here from your, your comments. So we'll make some changes and then the one you see next time will reflect those changes.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, Jessica, anything else on this last one? Sorry if I missed you.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
She's got the background.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's, she does, actually. Dr. Cleveland, anything else?
We'll bring it back for a second, reading up.
Okay.
Plenty of opportunity to read it, think about it. And if you have additional questions, we will answer them at the next board meeting.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, let's, we're going to close it up. So, um, for advanced planning, um, we will have no more board meetings this month. We will meet back, um, in January on the 13th and the 27th. And also this weekend is the NMSBA Annual Convention Embassy Suites. If you're going to that, this will be, I think, the first time in four or five years that I've missed it, actually. I think I even went right before I got put onto the board. So, um, if you have some good classes, please let me know about them. I'd like to hear, um, about it. Maybe we'll even add that to reports. If you guys, if you have some really good things that you want to take back to the board, we can add that into our, into our meeting in January. So let me know. And so with that, um, any questions on the planning? Any questions on dates?
Is there, you can put it in writing that there's no more meetings this?
I guess, no, I can't do that.
Good try.
But we can hope. That's, that was, yeah, that was a good one. All right, so our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.